Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 14th, 2025 General Committee Meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Rodriguez, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voeche.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Creason, and Lee Bowman, and Mr. Longham. Ms. Tysard are not with us. Dr. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you. All right. Agenda item number 2.1 is a proclamation. Mr. Warner.
So I'm gonna read this into the records, into our record, the official record of St. Bernard Parish School System. St. Bernard Parish School Board proclamation honoring Dr. Catherine Carcia Lemoine, President of the St. Bernard Parish School Board on being named BPW Woman of the Year. Whereas the St. Bernard Parish School Board proudly recognizes individuals who exemplify exceptional leadership, service, and dedication to the students, staff, and families of our parish. And whereas Dr. Catherine Carcia Lemoine has faithfully served as President of the St. Bernard Parish School Board, guiding with wisdom, compassion, and unwavering commitment to excellence in public education. And whereas her vision and leadership have strengthened our schools, inspired our colleagues, and advanced the mission of providing children in St. Bernard with opportunity to achieve their highest potential. And whereas through her professional achievements and community service, as evidenced in her role as the President of the Louisiana School Board Association, Lemoine has earned the respect and admiration of her peers, and now has been honored by the St. Bernard Parish, St. Bernard Business and Professional Women's Club, BPW, at its 64th Woman of the Year. Whereas this recognition reflects not only her individual accomplishments, but also the spirit of service and perseverance that define the St. Bernard Parish community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the St. Bernard Parish School Board does hereby congratulate and commend Dr. Catherine Carcia Lemoine on this well-deserved honor of being recognized as BPW Woman of the Year, and extends its deepest appreciation for her exemplary leadership, integrity, and lasting contributions to the students and citizens of St. Bernard Parish. Be it further proclaimed that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Dr. Catherine Carcia Lemoine and entered into the official minutes of the St. Bernard Parish School Board in grateful recognition of her achievements, giving an underhand and seal of the St. Bernard Parish School Board on this 14th day of October, 2025.
Thank you all so much. This is so kind and certainly a surprise. Oh!
Would y'all like to enter into a joint acclamation?
Acclamation, yes. Joint acclamation.
Or an acclamation, all in favor of a joint?
All in favor of a joint acclamation? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This truly touches my heart and is certainly a surprise. Thank you all for putting this together and for giving me this recognition. And I want to give my sincere thanks also to the incredible St. Bernard Business Professional Women's Group, who do so much for our community, including providing scholarships for our amazing Sheilman High students for many, many, many years. And so I'm so honored and touched, and again, really appreciate this from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So why don't we take a, yes, why don't we take a picture?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Mr. Warner?
Yes, sure.
Let me just, let me just say something. You know, one of the, I guess, one of the privileges or consequences of being around a long time is to see so many of our people just grow and mature and just become tremendous leaders, not only of our school system, but our community. So I can remember Dr. Lemoine as she came on as a very, very young teacher. I remember when she was waitressing her way through school, and then came on with us as a very young teacher, and grew very, very quickly. And we realized that leadership potential as she became reading coach and trained teachers for us, and did incredible work, not only in the classroom, but supporting our teachers in all of their efforts. And then went on to further that in working at the community college and leading many, many, many different efforts at the community college, and worked so closely and helped our students achieve such great heights over at Nunez as well. And then a tremendous accomplishment in becoming the President of Louisiana School Board Association, which extended that leadership potential not only throughout St. Bernard Parish, but throughout the state of Louisiana, where she's extremely well-recognized and well-thought-of. So we just want to make sure that you realize how important you are to us here and the community as a whole, but particularly to each and every one of our children and the opportunities that you have helped to give to them. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, young Ms. Carcia, who is now experienced Dr. Lemoine.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. Thank you. That means so much to me. I appreciate you so much. Thank you for your leadership and your guidance through the years. And again, thanks to all of you all. I appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to agenda item number 2.2, we have millage renewal information. Ms. Voeche.
I just wanted to bring your attention that we have some information that goes out to our community members and our supporters in the schools and in the community. We have the, our, a property tax millage renewal on the ballot in November 15th that is going to help ensure that we can keep our buildings in tip-top condition. I mean, this millage, five-and-a-half mills, is something that we rely very heavily on to keep all of our facilities in great condition. So it's dedicated solely to the repair and maintenance and renovation of every one of our schools. We have built each one of our facilities either brand-new since Hurricane Katrina or totally renovated. And this millage, that we are now debt-free, we do not have any outstanding bonds or interest to pay each year. And 10 years ago, our community has re-dedicated this particular millage to maintaining our buildings. So this particular flyer talks about some of the many things that we have done over the past years in using the millage, not only on all roof and repair, replacement, you know, painting, flooring, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, anything the building needs, but we've made some major improvements. It funds all the replacement of chillers and boilers at each of the schools, the energy management system for the climate control, our single points of entry, and all of our security upgrades that we've done over the last few years, our elementary school playgrounds and resurfacing. So we list many, many of the things on this flyer that we do with this particular millage, and it's vital to our school system that we get this renovated. So we want to encourage our public to be supportive of that renewal that will be on the ballot on November 15th. It does not constitute to be no new taxes. It is just a renewal of an existing millage. So we wanted to make sure that the community is aware of this, realizes this, and hopefully will come to support our teachers and primarily our students in helping us to maintain safe and secure environments for all of our people.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. And again, thank you for that description and explanation. Again, this will not increase any of our residents' current taxes. This is a renewal. It's critical for our school system to maintain our facilities. So thank you again for that presentation. Any questions or comments from Ms. Voeche?
I just make a statement that I hope everybody goes out and votes and supports our schoolchildren and our school system.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Warner. And again, early voting is November 1st through the 8th, and Election Day is November the 15th. Got it. All right. So we will move then to agenda item number 3.1, and that's an Education Committee item for Mrs. White.
Thank you. Yes, 3.1 is Beginning of Year Literacy Screener Results, and with us tonight we have Dr. Sartre Lamachia. Hope I said it right.
We will practice them. Yes, so these are our fall Beginning of Year Literacy Screener Results, where we test our kindergarten through third-grade students on their literacy skills. And if you look at these, we're really excited about the growth that we're seeing in our students. I attribute that to several things, of course, our teachers, but also we have scripted intervention programs for our students, along with our literacy mentors who are supporting our teachers and really training everyone that, you know, we're all on the same page when we're working with students, and meeting with all of our parents of students who are struggling to also equip our parents with the skills to help their own children, you know, along with the teacher, because we're partners. So looking at our scores in kindergarten, 40% of our students are scoring on our below level. Our special education kindergarten students, 27% are scoring on our above level, and our LEP students, our LEP students, 22%. Now, again, those are our youngest students coming in for pre-kindergarten, right? So we're also supporting our pre-kindergarten teachers this year. We just finished today doing some training and really focusing in on phonemic awareness with our youngest students and phonics, so that they're able also to help their students and assist their students with those skills that they may see deficits within their classroom. Our first-grade students, 64% of our students are on our above level, 39% of our special education students in first grade, and 62% of our LEP students. Immersion with our LEP students really works, you know, immersing them into the classroom, into literacy. For our second-grade students, 68% of our students are scoring on our above level, 51% of our special education students, and 57% of our LEP students. And in third grade, 67% of our students are scoring on our above level, 44% of our special education students, and 64% of our LEP students. I love to look at this from beginning of year, one year to the next year. So in 2024, a year ago, to the fall of 2024 to the fall of 2025, our kindergarteners in 2024, 27% of them were scoring on our above level coming into kindergarten, right? Now we're at 40%. So we saw a 13% growth in our students. First grade, 55% of the students were on our above level. Now it's 64%. Second grade, 56%, and now 68%, 12% growth there. And third grade, 63% to 67%. So really seeing a lot of growth. And again, I attribute that to many different factors. And looking at our student cohort, our kindergarteners last year, who 27% were on level, when they entered first grade this year, 64% of those students were on level. So just really being immersed in those literacy, you know, skills and strategies really are helping our students. 55% of our first graders who are now second graders, 68%. So from 55 to 68%, 13% growth in second to third, 56% to 67%. So that was 11% growth. So very exciting things happening in our younger grades, and hopefully we're gonna see that result in our older grades when they take their LEAP assessment, you know, that we're getting those comprehension skills and all of those deficits close, you know, cleared up. So any questions that y'all have for me?
Do we have any questions from the board?
I have a big one. Yeah. So looking at the cohort as they move, is it the students who are currently in second grade or the students who are currently in third grade who have had the longest period underneath the new literacy standards? I don't remember when they were put in.
So our literacy standards have not changed for our, you know, we still have the Louisiana Student Standards. What has changed for us is a more focused intervention program. But our standards have been the same since 2015 or so, and even before that, 2012 was, you know, when PAMACOR, then we went to Louisiana Student Standards. So just some tweaks in that, but so we've had the same standard.
But the focus on?
Are you talking about pre-kindergarten standards?
No, I use standards correctly. What I meant is the state started focusing on literacy.
Correct. That was two years ago.
Right. So that, those would be the students who are currently in second grade, they would've gotten in kindergarten and first, and now they're in second.
Then they're in second, correct.
Okay. That makes, that makes a lot of sense, that they have the highest growth at 68%.
Correct. And also too, like I said, they, it's always been a focus here for us as a district, you know, literacy, and really just shoring up their skills. A couple of years ago, probably three, well, we went the year before, we moved to a different assessment, DIBELS 8 instead of DIBELS Next, which was a little bit more rigorous, if you want to say. I mean, when you're teaching children read, rigor is, you know, looks very different. So now we've been using DIBELS 8 as a district. Like I said, we went a year ahead of the state. So it's been about three or four years. So we're really now seeing, you know, the fruits of our labor, I guess. And again, like I said, I'm hoping to see that with the LEAP scores also, that now those kids have moved through, you know, all of our programs. And again, hats off to our teachers and our administrators and all the people who are boots-on-the-ground, you know, it really makes a difference, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Catherine?
Just a comment. Just want to thank you and your team and all of the teachers and interventionists that are working at the classroom level. As you mentioned, as Ms. Harris brought up as well, we've been doing this work for a while, probably long before it was state-mandated, really talking about the building blocks of literacy. And so to see the fruits of our labor in these scores really improving, to see the jump in the kindergarten scores cohort to cohort really is a testament of the work that you all are doing in pre-K 4, in our universal pre-K program, and those teachers with the phonemic awareness skills. So hats off to you and your team and all of the teachers and interventionists. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Back to you, Catherine.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. White. Agenda item number 4.1, our Personnel Changes for October 2025, and we have Ms. Albers with us this evening.
Hi, good evening, board. In your folders, you'll see the minutes from our last school board meeting, and if you want to note, we do have a retirement noted.
Yes, we do have one retirement this month, and that's Ms. Kathy Tedesco. And so we want to, although she'll be with us for a few more months, we want to congratulate her. We wish her happy retirement and thank her for her many years of service.
I'd like to say something about Ms. Kathy Tedesco. She was hired back in the spring of 1988, which is the time I moved from the classroom into the central office. Ms. Tedesco was in 1988, coming in at the same time as I was at the business office. She was my secretary and the bookkeeper for all of the federal funds. So she has, she is a magnificent person, wonderful person. I've watched her children grow up, now her grandchildren growing up, and she has done a tremendous job with our programs. I know each one of our program coordinators and supervisors who deal with her is tremendously sorry to see her go, because she is the person who handles all of the financial transactions for the federal programs. She makes everything work. She deals with all of the reimbursements and the reports in Baton Rouge for the financial pieces to it. She's going to be tremendously missed in that department, both as a professional and as a person. So while I wish her well in retirement in a couple of months, I'm extremely sorry to see her go and have worked very, very closely over the years, tremendous asset to our school system.
Any other board members? Okay, thank you, Ms. Albers. And we want to welcome aboard, I see we have some new paraeducators that are starting with us, and they are such a critical part of our, the work that we do each and every day, so we want to welcome them aboard.
Yes, we're super excited to have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number five is a Finance Committee, and so I will toss it to Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Dr. Lemoine. 5.1 is a request for permission to solicit requests for proposals for telecommunications services. Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you, sir. We are requesting permission to advertise for requests for proposals to provide telecommunications services. That includes our internet service and our telephone service for our entire school district. This is a process we go through in order to qualify for E-Rate funding. The majority of these expenses would be eligible for E-Rate reimbursement, approximately 85%. So this is the beginning of this process. We're going to advertise for a contract, a 36-month contract with optional extension of 24 additional months for these services for the period beginning July 1st, 2026.
Any questions from board members? I have a question.
Sure.
So who's our current provider?
Our current provider is Cox Communications.
Okay. And who, who, where's the funds come from, from E-Grant? Is that a federal program or?
It comes from the FCC. It's a federal program to provide internet access to schools and libraries, and that's where the funding comes from.
As long as you follow their guidelines and?
Correct.
They'll pay for 85% of all expenses for this?
Yes, sir.
Can't beat that. Dr. Lemoine?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board.
I'll second it.
We have a motion of Dr. Lemoine, seconded by Mrs. White. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes, 7-0.
Okay, and then item 5.2 is request permission to solicit requests for proposal for network equipment. So, Mr. Fernandez, tell us about this network and equipment you want to buy.
Not so much me, but anyway, this is related to the previous item. This is also items that would be eligible for reimbursement through the E-Rate program. So we, this is the first step as well. This is not a continuing contract. This would cover things like access points, switches, and things related to providing internet services, the hardware actually that is included or needed to provide those services in our district. So we're requesting permission to go out separately for that, because it would be a separate, it's a separate category of reimbursement from the E-Rate program. So we're gonna separate it out and do it separately. Separately, I said separate too many times.
Any questions from board members? What, what are, what are some of the costs, like how much is the cost associated with doing this, like the upgrade or, you know, to, to get some of this equipment? It's pretty significant?
Depending on what it is, it could be, yes. Some of the larger piece of equipment could be quite pricey. Some more reasons, depends on what you get. We're going to develop, we're going to assess our needs and develop what we actually need to advertise for, but we need permission to begin that process.
The, what, somewhat what I know about it, okay? You know, the internet and the telephone services under telecommunications is network equipment, like Mr. Fernandez said, the switches, the access points, all the equipment necessary to push, I guess, that through to the students. Once you get these E-Rate applications and you get the grant for a five-year period, they put aside so much per student. So this year it's around, I think, $200 per student, but over that five-year period. So if we have about 7,000 kids, maybe it's 1.4 million, they'll put that on the side that we can access during the five-year period for that type of equipment. And I've been told that the lifespan of those types of equipment is around every five years, where you have to, you have to replace access points and switches. And so during the life of the contract that we have, then once, we may do some of it in year one, some of it in year three, some of it in year five, but hopefully it'll be on a rotational basis, so it'll constantly be replaced. And then they'll pay 85% of the cost of, of what it'll cost us because of the socioeconomic status. The percentages vary by the economic status of the people or the students within your schools and community.
So we, we pay, we pay Cox and then we get reimbursed?
85%, right.
Okay, okay.
And then the network equipment, it may not go to Cox, it'll probably go to people who provide those rights.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Campbell?
I would move with grant permission to advertise for proposal for network equipment.
With a motion by Mr. Campbell, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Lemoine, please cast your vote. Second by Dr. Lamoy. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
Still with me?
Item six, uh, six point one is an update on Shawmet High School, School Library reconfiguration. This was an item I asked to put on the agenda. Hello, how are you doing today, Mr. Dewey?
Doing great, Mr. Warner. Thank you very much.
Good.
Uh, good evening, everyone. It's great to see you. Um, as you're aware, I'm sure, um, when we constructed the Cultural Arts Center, uh, at Shawmet High School, uh, quite a few years ago at this point, a portion of that was allocated for public library use for our parish government and our local public library. Uh, they've recently completed and opened, uh, completed construction and opened their beautiful new facility, which gives us that space back. So what we are doing is look at allocating that space at this point and renovating it properly so that we can create more classroom and general education space for our students at the freshman academy or for Shawmet High School at large. So, uh, really what we're trying to do is just give you guys a good overview of that because we are in the process of getting all the planning together, construction documents, and all the specifics. And I've brought Mr. David LeKeen here this evening, who's going to give you guys, um, a good overview and some details and walk you through it, and we can certainly answer any questions you may have at that time. So I'll turn it over to Mr. LeKeen from LeKeen Architects.
Agreed.
Good afternoon and congratulations, Dr. Lamoy. Well deserved.
Thank you.
Um, I will, uh, kind of go over the floor plan and the project scope. I admit I have it on my phone. I wasn't sure if it was going to be up on the screen, so I just pulled it up. So if you see me looking down, that's why. Um, the project scope, as Jason described, is to, uh, convert the public library space to maximize classrooms. Um, and that's what we've endeavored to do. That's, uh, scope A. Uh, there are two scopes in this project. The, the main being conversion to classrooms. We're, um, able to accommodate six full-size classrooms and one half-size classroom. Uh, we've got some support spaces in the plan, including a conference or breakout room for the educators. Uh, there's, uh, offices, uh, storage rooms, a relocated electrical IT room, and a staff restroom. Uh, the construction materials that, uh, we plan to use are in keeping with, uh, the rest of the school systems and the schools that were built, uh, post-Katrina. Uh, that includes glazed CMU block walls, terrazzo flooring, vinyl tile flooring at classroom spaces, land ceilings, wood doors, hollow metal frames, resilient construction that, uh, we use down here in South Louisiana. Uh, the second scope is, uh, to convert the connecting breezeway between the Lacoste Ninth Campus to the public library space. Right now, it's an open-air structure. Uh, the second floor of it actually is enclosed. We plan to do the same. We'll enclose it with glazing curtain wall system, uh, to really give it that open feel still um, from both the street as well as, uh, the occupants. But if you look on the, uh, floor plan, uh, you'll see in green, uh, the classroom spaces. Um, in yellow is really just the corridors. Uh, the purple color is storage. The red space is electrical, and the light blue is the restroom, and then that purple, uh, magenta color is the conference space. So really a traditional kind of double-loaded corridor with classrooms on either side and, uh, support spaces provided. You'll see that the colored spaces within the floor plan, that's the area of work. That's the space that the old public library, um, took up. So we've, uh, tried to maximize the space as best possible to serve, uh, the needs of, uh, the school board and the campus there. And then in blue, you'll see the connecting walkway. It does extend off the page. We weren't able to show the entirety of the size of the walkway, but, um, it does connect to the Lacoste Campus. And the project size, scope A, which is the renovation of the classroom space, is approximately eleven thousand square feet. The connecting breezeway enclosure is approximately eighteen hundred square feet. Right now, we're tracking overall project cost between two and a half and two point seven five million dollars. Uh, the project schedule, we're currently in design right now. We have a schematic design deliverable next week, which, uh, schematic design is a level of, uh, deliverable to the owner that shows kind of the project intent. Then we'll move on to design development, which is a month, uh, in duration. Uh, that's where we progress our design a little bit more towards construction documents. Another month later, uh, we'll have construction documents complete with, uh, permitting and AHJ approval. That's the authorities having jurisdiction, the state fire marshal, the parish permitting, uh, at approximately another month. These things sometimes can run concurrently, and we try to do that just to cut the time down. Um, and then bidding would happen shortly thereafter with that occurring mid to late January. Uh, the construction schedule anticipates, uh, starting construction, uh, in February with a, uh, eight to ten-month, uh, construction timeline. Uh, this project, being a public project, typically will be bid publicly, um, unless there's a different route to be taken. That's been the standard across the district. I'll field any questions?
So the, the breezeway, uh, that's, it would be a new, that would be a new entrance to this, to this area?
So the, the entrances are existing? So you already walked through, uh, we're calling it a, uh, open breezeway underneath the canopy above? So we're not changing any entrances. We're just enclosing it.
Yeah, the, the second floor right now is enclosed, and that's how the students go from the second floor of the academy into the cultural arts building, which would be into this building. The first floor is an open breezeway, but you can still leave the ninth-grade academy, walk through the open breezeway into this building. But if we're going to use it every day, I asked him to go ahead and enclose that first floor, um, open breezeway so that there would be no way to go through it. I mean, that the students would be within an enclosed area at all points of travel.
Yeah, it's a more, it's a more secure way of access in both spaces.
What's the total square footage of the rental?
Twelve thousand eight hundred square feet.
All right.
Yeah.
Dr. Lamoy.
And I think you, Ms. Voche, you already answered this, but this will not impact single point of entry for the ninth-grade campus?
Oh, no. And that's why, one of the reasons I wanted them to enclose that first floor walkway, so that there can be no, um, intrusion as kids are leaving, you know, from the academy itself right into this building. So it's an enclosed walkway. So it will definitely not impact any single point of entry. There'll be no entrance from the outside. Let's put it that way.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, I know we could use the additional classroom space.
Yes, sir.
Over on that side, so definitely can use that. Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
I appreciate y'all's time.
Looks good, and hopefully we can get an update when, uh, the bids go out and get a timeline, a more efficient, a more, you know, up-to-date timeline on completion.
Oh, absolutely. We'll be updating, uh, the superintendent as well as you guys as this transpires and making sure we stay as close to on track as we can. Absolutely.
Thank you, Jase. Dr. Lamoy. Oh, okay, that's right. Update on safety measures. I'm sorry. Pass me there.
And your question segues well into this piece right here. Um, you know, as you know, school safety and security has always been a high priority, but is evermore a higher priority, uh, you know, in the current times in which we live, and we've been making a lot of adjustments and improvements. Um, our single point of entry projects are complete across the district. As you all know, um, we have taken a lot of measures to harden our perimeters and just increase security, whether it be our Evolve security systems, the, you know, kind of the gambit of all of the security measures. Um, something else we're doing, uh, as the result of the superintendent dedicating some of our, uh, millage funds as well as securing a safety and securities grant through GOSEP, um, we are going to take some additional measures. Um, first and foremost, we are going to install approximately six thousand square feet of security film at all of our storefront, uh, entrances in, in unsecured areas of glass around our entire district. And what this is, is a twenty-three mil security film. Um, a, a lot of times, people hear this and they think, oh, well, you're trying to make it bulletproof and these types of things. That, that's not the intent. But what the intent is, is to harden those glass entrances. So while it may not be completely bulletproof, it cannot be shattered immediately via bullet, bat, crowbar. It greatly increases the amount of time that glass would, around our district would take to be broken and/or forced through or to gain entry via that glass around our district. And as you know, anytime you increase the time of response, um, we're talking about the potential to save lives in an emergency situation, especially when we're talking about a violent situation. Um, the longer it takes to gain access to our buildings, the lo, the, the higher chance of, uh, a good outcome for us there is, and it gives our first responders that much more time to get to us and to assist in those situations. So we are going to be doing that across all schools, um, and that is going to be, again, at all of our major glass storefront entrances, um, glass windows and things of that nature that are not, or even in some cases are, you know, behind hardened perimeters and security fencing. So that is something, uh, for phase one of this. And the other piece of this, we are going to install controlled access points, which would be card scan access points at about seventy-two doors and entry points at all of our buildings. So a total of seventy-two across all of our buildings. And the purpose of that really is to reduce the number of hard exterior keys, traditional exterior keys that are being issued out for a few different reasons. Um, one, with card access, that door is always locked unless scanned, right? So that's, that's an important piece to us. Um, it makes it a lot, uh, a lot more certain that that door is always secure and locked. We can track who comes and goes, at what time and at what door. We can set schedules for those doors. So if we want to make sure that, you know, particular staff have access to the building, but not necessarily twenty-four-hour access, um, we can set those schedules. And if someone would leave us who has one of those security keys, those card keys, we can simply disable it and they no longer have access to the building. So doing that helps to, in conjunction with the, the security film, really helps to take extra steps and really secure our buildings even further at this point. So we're taking those steps, and again, they're in conjunction with a, uh, safety and security grant that we have, uh, received, as well as some of our district funds.
Great news. Glad to hear that.
Or somebody would like a hard key. If you lose the key.
Right.
Right.
You know, now if you lose your key card and you tell us, we can disable the old, issue you anew. If you lost a hard key, we'd have to change the locks on everything. So this would be much, much more secure.
And when you start talking about lock changes at a campus like Shawmet High School, or really any of them, but Shawmet High School is a great example, that's, that's a fairly significant undertaking.
Absolutely.
Can you talk about the middle school metal detectors?
Oh, and, and, yes, for middle school, um, what we're looking at, at this point, the superintendent has approved, and we are going to be securing the Evolve Threat Detection System um, for all of our middle school campuses at this point, um, which we have been employing at the high school and also at our alternative location at points in the past. Um, that has been very successful. Um, we've integrated it well. We've had a great response from both student and community that, uh, that that level of security and screening and safety is taking place. We're going to be able to extend that out to our middle schools at this point. We're very happy to announce that, so.
Fabulous. What's the timeline on that?
Um, so our timeline for the, um, for the ballistic, uh, or the security film, we are going to be starting installations, um, in mid-November, and we're probably talking about a three-month period to complete every last piece of it because, again, we're touching every single campus, um, uh, around the district. So it's going to take a little bit of time to complete it. Similar timeframe for the, um, for the controlled access doors, uh, those items have all been ordered and are, you know, being shipped to us. As soon as they're in, our vendor's going to start installation right away, probably a two- to three-month period to complete all of them, over seventy-two doors, because it's not just the hardware installation. You have to network them, and, you know, there's a number of things that have to happen to, to get them active. But we're talking next couple of months to have that finished. And then for the Evolve, um, you know, metal detector or security threat detection system, we're hoping to have everything live and possibly in place and utilizing them at the middle schools um, at the start of the next semester or in the new year, uh, the, you know, January.
Wow, that's an aggressive timeline. That's a lot of work to be getting, to do.
We're working hard to try to make it happen, though. So, uh, if, if all goes well, and we'll certainly provide updates as those timelines become a little bit more certain. But, um, I think Evolve would be the only one. We're waiting on a, a little bit of that to solidify yet, but we're still looking pretty good for that January date.
We're working him very hard, Mr. Lamoy.
Yeah, absolutely. It sounds like it. Well, that's great. Any other questions from board members on Dr. Lamoy?
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Um, thank you for your presentation, Jase.
Thank you, ma'am.
For, um, the, the card access project for the seventy-two entrances, is that something that's impacting all school sites, or are you all, um, centralizing that project to just certain school sites?
Uh, no, ma'am, actually, it affects every school site.
Wonderful.
So we, we have it in place at every school site currently. We're just expanding.
Expanding, okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Jase and Dewey.
Thank you, Mr. Lamoy.
Dr. Lamoy.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. And, uh, agenda item, uh, seven is superintendent's notes. Ms. Voche.
Just a reminder, we have Red Ribbon Week, um, coming up next week. We also, at the next school board meeting, um, the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, and the ASBO, Association of School Business Officials, we have received on last year's statements, both their awards for excellence in financial reporting, and we'll have that at the regular meeting. We had professional development today for all of our teachers and some of our, um, some of our cafeteria workers, some of our paraprofessionals, and it went extremely well today. And I just want to also remind people that next week, we'll have report card conference night. Next Tuesday, uh, the high school will be on Tuesday, the twenty-first, from three-thirty to six forty-five. On Wednesday, the next night, uh, the twenty-second, the middle school will go from four until seven fifteen. And then the third night, Thursday, the twenty-third, for the elementary schools, from four-thirty to seven forty-five, with some adjustments for the, any school that's not on the traditional elementary, middle, or high school, um, schedule. It's, everything is scheduled an hour after the regular school closes, then for that three-and-a-half to four-hour time period afterward.
Anything else, Ms. Voche?
That's it.
Okay, and, um, again, we want to thank all of our teachers and staff members that are, um, working hard to make sure that those report card conferences run smoothly and that parent communication is such, uh, and a critical part of what we do. So thank, thanks to all of our staff for their efforts with that. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion by Mr. Campbell.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.